Good evening, we're opening the meeting of the only Board of Appeals. The first article is with Ken Foods. Dave Eagle is not sitting.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my company has direct business with Ken's Foods, so I'm going to recuse myself tonight from tonight's hearing.
Okay, and Jeff Walker is sitting as an alternate in his place. And Dave Driscue is not here, and Andrew is going to sit as an alternate also.
Okay, Dave Williams.
Dave Williams. Karen, would you read the request, please?
Ken's Foods, 325 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass. 01772. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the Thomas J. McGollif Hearing Room of the Southborough Townhouse, 17 Common Street, on Wednesday, June 15, 2016, at 7:30 PM to consider the application of Ken's Foods, Inc., 325 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass., special permit to allow expansion of the existing building pursuant to Section 174.9, 174.25A2, special permits and uses in the Industrial Park District, Section 174.8.6C1, all uses that exceed 50,000 square feet. The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing in the Thomas J. McGollif Hearing Room of the Town of Southborough Townhouse on Wednesday, June 15, 2016, at 7:35 PM to consider the application of Ken's Foods, a variance to allow expansion of the existing building, variances and uses in the Industrial Park District, Section 174.8.6E4, maximum height 45 feet and three stories. Copies of the application may be reviewed at the office of the Building Department at the Townhouse during normal business hours. Leo F. Bartolini, Jr., Chairman. This letter is dated May 3, 2016. Ken's Foods, James Bourne, Site Supervisor, One D'Angelo Drive, Marlborough, Mass., referencing 325 Turnpike Road. Greetings, I have reviewed your proposal to add an addition on the east side of the existing building. The property is located in an IP zone. At this time, I must deny your request for a building permit. To proceed with this project, zoning relief in the form of a special permit significantly modifying the existing special permit to increase the building footprint in additional 95,117-plus or negative square feet must first be granted by the zoning board. Additionally, the project will exceed three stories and the 45-foot height limitation. You will also need a variance for the anticipated height of 65-plus or negative feet. If you choose to seek zoning relief, you must apply for a hearing with the Zoning Board of Appeals for relief from the following sections of the Southborough zoning bylaw: Special Permit, 174.8.6C1, all uses that exceed 50,000 square feet; Variance, 174.8.6E4, maximum height 45 feet and three stories. I have enclosed a special permit and a variance application and filing instructions for your convenience. Also, contact the Town Planner for Planning Board approval. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. Sincerely, Mark Robidoux, Building Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pizzoni, Representative?
Yes, Chairman, William Pizzoni, I represent Ken's Foods, or most of you a couple of times already on the site. I just want to make sure that...
Yeah, you need to use the mic, sir.
I just want to make sure that the reading of the application...
Now turn it on, Bill.
Turn it on.
Button on the top.
Now we're live.
There you go.
Okay, William Pizzoni, I represent Ken's Foods. I just want to make sure, because you read the variance applica... the special permit application, but I don't think you read the variance application, although you alluded to it in the notice. I just want to make sure that we're opening both hearings at the same time. I don't want there to be a conflict or an issue at later dates.
No, 7:30 and 7:35.
Right, okay, so we're going to go through one presentation for both of them.
And just...
I just want to make sure that the notices were read properly at the hearing here, too.
Where's the agenda?
Agenda?
I know, but I can't... And just so it's publicly record that at 7:30 is the Ken Foods special permit, and at 7:35 is the Ken Foods variance, which is on our agenda, proper.
And we're going to hear both of them simultaneously.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Together. Do you have anything on the variance?
On the applications, yeah, you have the applications.
Yeah, but do you have the required...
Yes, I must have been the way I ran it by Mark Robidoux, and he was okay with it, but it must be a little... I did reference both time frames.
Okay, so they're both referenced on that.
And I referenced a variance and a special permit, and that's significant time.
Okay.
That's fine, thank you. One thing I would like to point out, that in the variance application, they had included wholesale distribution, storage, and manufacturing at the site. And there's no manufacturing at the site. That was an oversight, and it was improperly included. The second thing I'm going to allude to is that I came tonight, and I did expect the easel to be here, and since the easel isn't here, I'm going to buy one and donate it to this building. So I'm going to ask Jim Bourne. I looked downstairs, we looked in half the offices, and there isn't one here. Normally, I would have brought one.
You could probably set it up on the table there with the mic holding it up.
Sure, I'd like to show first the plan.
Yeah, that isn't... And we've got pictures of that to review anyways, personally, on the board.
Yeah, this is in the packet, and also, actually, in your packets and in the submission, the engineer, when he was drafting this, didn't realize that the Deerfoot Road connection is only for emergency use, and he didn't appropriately identify it up in that corner. I don't want anybody to think we're trying to pull a fast one or anything. It's going to continue to be closed and only utilized for emergency access. A lot of you are very familiar with the site. We've been before you a couple of times for the time change in the hours. And then for the first attempt, because we're going to move forward with the automation inside, and we had intended to build off the front of the building and off the side of the building, which would have been approximately 145,000 square feet of more footprint, which you approved, and you gave us approval for it to move forward. However, when we get into reviewing the site deeper, and as you noticed this spring, there was a pond out front. And part of the issue there, we realized, and I was somewhat aware of it, but I wasn't as aware of what a big problem it is, this whole front area had been wetlands years ago, and it was filled with peat and not really good material to support a foundation or a building or anything of really substance. So Ken's, when they did a few borings and looking around, and there's a river that runs here, they said, "Well, maybe we need to look at reconfiguring the building to make it work better, so that we're not there, because we're not going to be able to go that way." The other aspect of it that came into play was, many of you are aware that the Crystal Pond intersection across the street on Route 9 is being going to be reconfigured, and is in fact at about 80% design for half a dozen different proposals for that location. To... Actually, it's just for the access to the EMC property and all the development that's going to go over there, but also for the expansion of Route 9 and to widen it and create either clover leaf or connections. In October of last year, the Mass DOT came out and said, "You gave us a half a dozen scenarios. The one we really like was 5A," and I do have a copy of it, if you want to see it. And actually, 5A moves this intersection over to about here, to come in and go like this. So it would have impacted construction or development on the front of the building anyhow. It obviously can support a road, but it can't support a building and all the storage that would be in it. So Ken's put it back on the drawing board and looked at it to see how they could work this effectively on the site. As you're aware, we're constrained with wetlands over here. We're constrained with wetlands back here. The property, the site, if you look at it, this is the building here. And in the back section, Ken's owns a piece of residential that's back there, but they've never intended to build on it. It's on the other side of the wetlands. It actually does have the septic system for the facility back there, and that's the only thing that'll ever go there. And they were constrained here with more wetlands, so they couldn't go out there, and that's where all the trailer traffic would be anyhow. So the ideal scenario was to go east towards Deerfoot. What they came up with was an addition on this end, adding 180 feet towards Deerfoot and running the length of this building where it's built down to where the parking is in that back corner, adding 95,117 square feet of footprint. Okay, so it's actually, it was going to be less footprint than had already been approved. However, to make the mechanics work, as you know, they're going to put about $25 to $30 million worth of robotics in here to make it work better and more efficiently. In order to make it work appropriately, they looked at different configurations and what they could do, and the ideal and the best situation is to go up to 65 feet. In this area, you can only go to 45. The existing building at that end is about 35 feet tall already, so you'd be adding another 30 feet to it. They questioned other options, they questioned pricing and everything. If they did a bunch of small bump outs and other configurations, it would have been another $3 million or so in costs and expenses. It made much more sense to come in and request a variance where we were going to only be 15 feet up above the allowed height of 45 feet at this point. Now, as you recall... Oh, and these renderings were put in your package. They show what it would look like with the addition on that end. It shows it from the Deerfoot roadside, and it shows you from the back angle, so you can kind of get a look at it. As you recall, or you know, along Deerfoot Road, there's a real lot of vegetation and high trees here that block the building that in this... Other than in the Medeta Winter in the early spring, you can't even see the building from Deerfoot Road. We took the time to fly some balloons. We met with the neighbors, and we talked to them, and some of them had some concerns that 65 feet was going to be high, it was going to be imposing upon them, and it was going to be on top of them. So we actually had the balloon people out, I think, three times. And the first one was the most effective, because the last couple of, they've just blown away and haven't been able to maintain. But what they do is they tether them, so that when they're up, you can kind of see where they are. And when we drove back here into this neighborhood, we couldn't see the balloons. From over here up in Kenley, you couldn't see the balloons. Obviously, from the Turnpike Road, you could see the balloons. Over here, along Deerfoot, these houses that are built on the lower side of Deerfoot, they're actually backyards and are below grade of the road of Deerfoot, and you really don't see a lot of it. We didn't see much, I think we caught the glimpse of one balloon when it was up there. The two people that live up on the top of Deerfoot, right here and here, they're probably impacted the most. And so we went up and we met with Mr. Sears and the other butter... I'm sorry, I can't remember your name, but I know you're here. And her husband wasn't there, and, you know, we looked out at the building and actually... Can you take the next picture? We took some pictures that afternoon while we were up there of the site. This is David Sears's property, looking from his property over to the buildings. This is the... And I'm sorry. Ah, gosh. Their property, and you can see, they can see the top of the building. They can clearly see it from their front yard, because their driveways come up, big side entrance into their house. You walk into the front door, and most of their area is in the backyard. I do have a couple of those pictures I can give to you, and you can pass them, so you can look at them. These are both properties, you can pass them now. During one of the four flights of the balloons, we were able to get up and take a couple of pictures, and Jim took them from this property here, since it was the most impacted, and we wanted to give you an idea of the view of the balloons. You can see there's a balloon here and here, which are approximately at the horizon green line is where the top of it would be. This is a little bigger picture of the same shot, just so that you can kind of see it in a little bigger fashion. I have photos of that I can give you as well.
Karen, put those on record, please.
These are the white balloons?
It's 65 feet to the top of the balloon.
Here and there.
Yeah, either way.
All right, yep.
Yeah, I did. Mr. Pizzoni?
Yes.
Is this the balloon on the... these two white squares?
Yeah, they're two white dots.
I know they're white round balloons, but these are squares. But those are the balloons, right?
The balloons are...
The round squares.
This one and that one?
That one and that one.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now, as you know, Ken's is a good neighbor. They built a big wall behind the facility so that it would keep the noise and the traffic and fix the back roadway, so the noise would stop for the abutters in the back. You can turn this over. Give me the site plan, please. As advised all along, once we moved all the area over here where the new reconfiguration would be for the trucking, all these bay doors in the back would be closed. They wouldn't be utilized any longer. They'll only be parking for the employees to come into the facility back there. And on an average day, how many employees, Jim? Maybe 15 employees coming in and out of the building.
Excuse me, that is still under regular rules and regulation of the approval of non-vehicles, commercial vehicles.
Right, right, there'd be no trucks back there. The trucks would be from here back. Because this is all going to get graded. The grade is coming down, because if you notice, when you go in there, it goes down low. They get in, fill into the building, and then you've got to step up to another grade. It's going to be all reconfigured, so we can get the trucks off of Route 9, off of here, and either in a bay or out in here, off Route 9, so that then they can access in here. The new reconfiguration will make it a lot easier for the trucks to move around there.
Right, the thing is, there is an issue on the trucks coming off of Route 9 and parking. And they've been parking in the driveway and unhooking themselves and just leaving the trailers there. And recently, I've taken some pictures of it. And there's been two or three trailers on Monday, two trailers on Monday, that were waiting out on the Route 9 because they couldn't get into the project. So this is something, when the board gets to the point, if it's approved, that we want to make a part of a condition, so that does get changed properly. And the other traffic issue also is going to be the U-turn on Middle Road.
Right.
Has it been improperly done? The trucks have not been doing the U-turn, but they've been going through the two subdivisions and coming back out on Parkerville Road, which is not right.
Right.
We're going to the Board to discuss, to have a meeting, which I talked to Karen Gallagher today. And we have a meeting with Mass Highway and about putting signs up to properly correct that. And that's something that'll get done as we go on.
And this issue has recently been brought up to me, you know, by the Building Commissioner as well, because he had heard some complaints. So I brought it up to Jim. Jim, you know, he can police it only so far. But he did suggest that until this is all reconstructed, if you want, he would get a police detail to make sure they're not out on Route 9 if it becomes an issue.
The thing is...
The other thing for the neighborhoods, that we know that that's a no-no. They're not supposed to be doing it. We tell the drivers that.
They'll sign off.
Yeah, they all sign off saying they do it the right way. You know, whether it's a Ken's truck or not, I don't know. But even if it isn't a Ken's truck, I don't have a problem. And I know Ken's will pay me to go to the Selectmen to ask them to make that roadway going up Middle Road in Parkerville, and maybe no trucks.
Right, and the other thing is that...
And that's because, as a citizen of the community, I think it needs to be addressed as well.
And when we did the last decision, we made it very clear that they had to go down and turn around on Route 85.
Right.
And that really hasn't been done properly.
Well, you utilize GPS with them.
GPS brings drivers to that emergency exit.
Oh, it does.
So...
All right, so you've got to change that.
On this new thing, where you go and talk to Karen and...
Yep.
Have her and go to DEP to get proper signage put up to prevent it. And there's issues, because we don't want to eliminate the U-turn for residents and stuff like that. It's just for the trailer trucks that we want to prevent it, so...
You can put a sign up, trucks over a certain size.
Be the way, what type of signs is okay to do. And Karen is going to come up with, when there's a session of putting signs up on the subdivision roads also that'll prevent it to be properly... Because it's not properly to be done, because even when they come out on the Parkerville Road and try to make the swing up the hill, they've got to go on the passing lane and barely make the turn, because it's so narrow and sharp.
Right.
So it's not proper.
They are aware of it now. Jim has been looking into it since I recently heard about it. But back to the, you know, the fact that they try to work with the neighbors. They try to come up with ideas that might help them. So what they did was, if you can put up that other... We had them chat with their engineers about using different massing techniques and different color schemes to try to make it look smaller, basically, or make it blend in with the trees, even if it's in the winter or in the summer. Or in this instance, I think it's too low to be the sky, but in some instances, you see that they do that. The other thing is they do is they break up, break it up, so it's different colors or patterns. We did look at what I thought at first would be the best idea, and it was to put a trellis along the side here and have vines grow up the top or grow down. Unfortunately, they steal a food product, and the government won't let them do it, because they looked into it because of the health and safety issues. Because that would have been a perfect fit, because it would have been green, it would have blended in with everything in the winter, it would have been brown. But they're willing to commit to working with the architects at the site plan review side of this, if we get there, to come up with alternatives, to clean it up so that it blends in more, you don't notice it that much, and it's off in the distance. The other thing we did talk about is, when you look at the site now from across the street... You want to turn this here? What they do see from up there is the top of the building. And they see all those air handlers and all of that. But once this addition is on, you're not going to see that. But they've also committed to bring like a half false wall, probably another 30, 40 feet, down the top of the building there, so they're not looking out at air handlers and things like that on the roof. Because they're above whatever parapet they make us put on it. So they're trying to be good neighbors. They want to make it work. They're going to be open to many types of suggestions. Unfortunately, Ken's is doing great business. Unfortunately, they're doing a great business. They need storage capacity. That's what accelerated this project to get to their automation. And if it can't be here, they're going to have to go somewhere else. And, you know, Southborough, as well as all the other communities around here, are all pushing for a good, solid tax base on the business side. We have a Fortune 500 company that's well-established across the country, willing to sink this kind of money here and basically make an investment to be here for the next 35, 40 years as a facility for their operation, which their headquarters is in Marlborough. And it won't change much after that. I did get a letter from the assessor, and his anticipated increase in the taxes is approximately $63,000 annually on the reconstruction of the property. I think we have a history of being cooperative, trying to work with the neighbors, trying to make it as seamless as possible of a strain. Unfortunately, it's one of the few industrial sites, industrial park sites in Southborough, and it happens to about this neighborhood. It should be utilized, you know, to its maximum. The distance from Deerfoot Road to the facility, once it's built, is still going to be 400 to 500 yards. So it's a long ways away. I'd like to stop at this point, but have an opportunity to respond to all the criteria of the variance and the special permit that we need to meet so that we can address comments that the audience might have or the board might have.
Okay, before we do that, I'd like you to clarify, which you've stated, but you haven't stated it properly, is the... stated it properly, is the reason why it has to be done. On the variance, you have to have the conditions that make it allowed.
That's right. Well, I did allude to it, I probably didn't go into it as much as I should have. I need the site plan. The criteria is that the site itself has to drive you to... It has to inhibit you so that you have the need for the variance. And we pretty much can't use this area any longer, you know, based on the soil conditions, the wetlands, and actually, the Route Nine infrastructure that's going to be built here in the future. So all these components come into play to meet that criteria, Mr. Bartalini. And I'll go through all the four basic criterias at the very end and tell you how I think we meet them. I just think we need to... I think we need to hear from the neighbors.
Yeah, the thing is that you need to submit the reason of the hardship.
Sure.
And put that so it's publicly on the record properly.
I'll read it to you right now.
Unless you don't have it.
No, I can read it to you right now. Do you want the special permit one first or the variance?
Variance.
Okay. I'll go through the whole thing, because part of it's what I just went through as well, but I didn't want to do it until the closing. Okay, the applicant's request of dimensional variance in the industrial park district on Route Nine to increase its warehouse and shipping operation by adding an addition of approximately ninety-five thousand square feet. On the east side of the existing building footprint, which would be one hundred and eighty feet long along Route Nine and five hundred and twenty-eight feet along the Deerfoot roadside. This would require, however, variance for height of the addition to be sixty-five feet. And I go in to tell you about the prior approvals that you had. I won't read it all because I want to get to the neighbors. Because of the location of the property on Route Nine and Deerfoot, its infrastructure, the location of the existing structures on the property, and its infrastructure, the property shape, topography, and geological makeup, including the constraints of the wetlands and protected resources, the riverfront area, which is in the front and along the side. On a large amount of the site, the applicant is requesting this variance in order to possibly preserve its ability to financially stay at this property. The property is an integral part of Route Nine streetscape, and the planned relocation of Crystal Pond Road's intersection modifications will impact the site and its front yard. The requested relief specifically addresses and affects the uniqueness of this property and not other properties within the industrial park district. Furthermore, a little enforcement of the bylaw would involve substantial hardships to the owner, the abutter, and it would be a community as well, because you'd end up with an empty building again at some point. You saw how long it took to fill it up previously. Ken's is going to have to leave, they're going to have to put it on the market. So the tax rate, it's already gone up, I believe, a million dollars since they bought it. So that's a lot of taxes for the community to lose. Plus, to lose a class business like Ken's would be ridiculous. The criteria of a variance is stated in the bylaw. The Z B A will have the power to grant those petitions, including use variance, when the board finds that due to circumstances relating to soil conditions, topography, shape of land, or structures. Okay, that's the first criteria. This criteria's been met. We've got associated wetlands, we've got resource areas, we have soil conditions at the front of the property that lack stability to support substantial infrastructure, such as a building and the stored property inside of it. The front yard of the site will also be impacted when Crystal Pond intersection is reconstructed per the favored plans of MassDOT. The next step is especially affecting such lands or structures, but not generally the zoning district in which they are located. Again, the above criteria, it's specific to the site. Nobody else has filled front yard like that. Nobody, I don't think there's another site other than maybe one of Jackie's that has that much wetlands on it and it's that size. And again, there is an existing building on the site and infrastructure that's there that pushes us to have to go in this direction. The next is a literal enforcement of this chapter would involve substantial hardship to the appellant and petitioner. You know, the appellant has already made a considerable investment in the site. They put up, I don't know, how much was that wall? Two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar sound barrier wall, just to help the neighbors' situation. Plus, they've done some internal work, but they're going to put another twenty-five to thirty-five million dollars into the property. And if they can't get this height extension, they're not going to be able to do it. So for them, they're going to have to pull out and move. So they've wasted over three hundred thousand dollars already and a lot of time and energy. And the desired relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of the chapter. The proposal clearly meets this criteria. Sure, the building's going up. The impact is very minimal. Unfortunately, it's not minimal to a couple of abutters. Most of the others, it is. The good thing is, there's no more truck traffic out back. It's a better thing for the rest of the neighborhood. There's better, there'll be a better transition on the operation of the facility, getting in and off of Route Nine, so it'll make it better. And we're willing to do whatever we can to shield by vegetation, even going on the abutters property if they want, to plant strategically trees to help them. But it's a view issue for the abutters, we understand that. We understand that it's dear to them that in their front yards, they look out, they don't want to see anything. Basically, I don't think they're going to see much from April till probably October, mid-October, but in the winter, they may see a little bit more because it's going to be thinned out. But again, we're trying to mask the property and create something that will fit in with the neighborhood and kind of be lost in the background. The Board of Appeals may also impose conditions and limitations and safeguards not based on the continued ownership by the applicant or the petitioner. And further, if the rights authorized by the variance are not exercised in a year, they shall lapse, and we'd have to apply for a new petition. My feeling is that this site and this petition is the poster child for this type of application. We have all the criteria of the site, it's pushing us. We have a great community business that's here and wants to stay here and be here for a long term. And we know that once this is built, nothing else is going to impact that area. It's clear the site's unique in its location, its size, its usable area, due to soil condition, the proposed Route Nine infrastructure changes, and the conservation constraints. We feel that it's a benefit for the community because it will ensure this strong, family-owned national company to maintain its presence in South Row for decades, many of whom the owners live in the community as well. So they want to make sure it's done right. It's clear that the hardship has been met and that we have met the other criteria, that the relief can be granted without substantial detriment to public good, especially since we'll be increasing taxes and maintaining a stable tax base at that site for years and decades to come. That's it, other than, there's a few other little corollary paragraphs, but I don't think you need me to go into those at this point.
Alright. The board, questions? We start at the other end of the board?
No, thorough presentation, I'm more curious on the neighbors' input.
Also curious on the neighbors' input. From understanding this, the proposed new construction would coincide with also reconfiguring the parking and driving of the trucks on the west side of the...
Oh yeah, everything's remaining on, everything's on the west as far as truck traffic and circulation of the business.
But this would coincide with reconfiguring that, like, that needs to be...
Oh yeah, yeah.
This is going to be part and parcel for, I mean, one is going to go with the other, you're saying?
Yeah, they're going to do the whole site all at once.
And so I know from, you know, one of the previous go-rounds with this, where the, you know, a lot of the nuisance and noise and stuff was from traffic behind, so this, would this help eliminate some of that even further?
Oh yeah, yeah. Actually, because of the grade changes where the circulation's going to go for the trucking and they're going to back in there, that's actually going down. So the building becomes more of a sound barrier. In fact, the addition, I mean, you brought up a good point, because as you recall, the last time, we did a lot on sound and how sound comes out and goes up. Well, the top of the addition is probably going to block some of the sound coming off of Route Nine and four ninety-five for those neighbors that are on the hill. So, you know, it's, in disguise, it's going to help as well. Yeah.
And you're factoring in this proposed change of entrance also, that's...
That's, when MassDOT says that's happening, it has to happen.
But that would easily be connected into...
Right.
To what you anticipate maybe coming from them.
Yeah, if you, give me a second.
This is the favored option for MassDOT and EMC, who's going to be paying for all of it, for the reconstruction of Crystal Pond Road.
Okay, so that's where we're just...
Yeah, they're going to move it over to here. But all this is really what MassDOT's looking at, and they wanted to realign it.
I mean, the reason I ask is, is that would that have any impact in what's being proposed? Or you have to come back again and go, oh geez, they're doing this to the road, and we have to now ask for another...
We wouldn't, if we wanted, they'd have to mandate Mass Highway or whatever they want.
Okay.
The other thing the board needs to remember, that on the previous decision we made, we made conditions on the parking and the traffic and the traveling in the back of the property and everything. And on this decision, we will go back and add that also to this decision, which we priorly did.
Right.
So just everybody realizes that we did do that once already, and we should do it again.
Yeah.
That would all, this would all, this plan implies with all that.
And then we're going to add to it on top of that.
Right. Yeah, if I could, Mr. Chairman, the special permit application basically recites what we went through with the last special permit, only saying we have to move it to the other side instead of the front. And really, that's all the change, the only change from the last special permit. So we would expect most all the criteria would remain, if not all.
Hi, I just, I had some more questions on the second floor. So you mentioned you would put up, you're saying you would put up a wall to, so you would hide it a little bit more?
Oh, on the roof, yeah. Because from up where those...
That would be on the roof?
It would be on, not on the addition. Because the addition's going to be high enough to block probably eighty percent of the roof units that's on, that's further out. See, that, that there...
So you just...
Already blocks, when you build it, it already blocks a good portion of the top. And what we do is we just carry it like a false wall down to here. So it would block more of the rooftop units, so they won't see them.
So on the addition, you basically are extending the height of it to hide more of the rest...
But it's not going to be usable space. It's going to be a false wall, really an aesthetic for the neighbors.
Alright, alright.
We don't need it, we could go without it, but we're thinking, if I was a neighbor, I wouldn't want to be looking at rooftop units if I can help it.
Okay, I understand.
The parapet wall's not going to be as high as the addition, though, that wouldn't be necessary.
It'll be high enough to cover, you know, we'll do the designation as to how high and how far out it needs to go. And that's something that site plan would work with, I was on.
Right, yep.
So the other, on the second floor, I'm just curious from a noise perspective, because now you're obviously up high. I'm not sure, like, what happens on that second, that is a second floor, correct?
No, no, actually, it's a big warehouse. It's open and it's all robotics inside. There's no windows on the side of this, there's very few people inside of it.
So you just, you just have some very high shelves and storage?
There's pallets, there's going to be pallets stacked up. And they go in and the robotics move it, bring it out, and put it where it needs to go.
Right, understood. So you're just basically adding more storage capability by going up?
Right, right.
Okay, alright. The other two things I have are a little bit more like procedural. I'm just curious what you've done or what you plan to do so far. You mentioned what you could do with the neighborhood to blend in. Have you, have you, have you met with them to sort of figure out how you're going to do that? Or is that going forward?
If that will, because that's more of a site plan aspect, we would deal with that with them there. What we're making here is a commitment. I mean, we committed, last time we built a three hundred thousand dollar wall, to block sound, because we want to be good neighbors. You know, and we'll do what, you know, we can, other than, you know, maybe paint this elaborate mural on the side of it.
Right, right. But is that, I don't know, maybe a lot, is that, there's a site plan review that would, where they would do that?
No.
No?
Well, I think it's, if there's going to be a condition on the design of the building, that should be done through this board.
So you want us to design the building?
Well, if you're going to do something to the design of the building.
Well, we will commit to doing those colors and other massing types of alternatives.
The thing, the thing that we can do is, when we get to that end of this, we can make the motion that it goes to the planning board to be done finalized there also. Well, it depends where we're at at that time.
Yeah, my only point is, obviously, there's, you know, give and take, and people have different opinions. Just, I guess I'm looking for what, you know, what the mechanism is to make sure you're working with the neighbors on that.
I think, I think our history will prove that. I mean, we, Jim's been very receptive. Actually, he put the balloons up three, three times this week, just to try to keep them up so people could see them, and the winds just didn't work with us.
Still there, one was still there this afternoon.
Yeah, okay. But, you know, they, people, when they, when they were having problems, they would call him, and I'll let the neighbors speak to this, he responded. He'd get out there, he'd find out what the issue was, and he, I mean, he had walkie-talkies to keep the people from, you know, getting outside of their trucks and yelling and things like that. They take the steps.
Okay, alright, good. And the last thing, again, is sort of procedurally, now, the previous modification, did that go through conservation? Because I can see you've got riverfront alteration and restoration.
No, we put on this one what we thought we were going to have to do for the riverfront alteration, because even though we're building in a disturbed area within the riverfront, we told them that we'd reclaim some of the grass area and basically make it more riverfront friendly. So actually, the woods is going to grow closer.
Okay, it's just, I mean, it's not really, I think, for this board to talk about conservation issues, but I just, I'm just asking, does that then go before conservation?
Right, after we, if we get approval here, our next step is to start the design of the site plan and do our conservation filing, which it'll be, there'll be months of hearings. Because we'll be going in, they'll be talking about air handlers, they'll be talking about what's on the side, making sure that the turning radius and the circulation's proper. I've met with all the public safety and public works departments and had them look at it. And they said, no, it looks fine, we have no issues with it. I don't think any of them sent any opposition letters or anything. So, you know, we're trying to do it right and take the steps properly.
Yeah, I mean, I apologize, maybe I should be more familiar with how that goes. I'm just asking what, to me, seems like sort of an obvious question on the conservation.
No, no, it's, believe me, it's an appropriate question, because a lot of people, even in the audience, might not realize, this isn't the end of this.
Right.
You know, this is just to allow us to build to the height, and then we have to design it and have it approved by the planning board under certain criteria that's already in existence within the community.
Right, okay. I think that's it.
I have a question about how this relates to the other two things that were before the, before the Z B A. So is this what, I feel like, the first, I don't know if it was a variance or a special permit, was to deal with the twenty-four hours, and then in December...
I'll give you the history if you want, yeah. In nineteen seventy-six, I believe it was, they got a special permit to build the first phase of that building. Then they expanded it.
Was that NINEX then, or was that...
It was, yeah, it was NINEX, yeah. Then, when we came into it and bought the property, we came in because it had, there was, we felt it was confusion relative to the twenty-four hour operations seven days a week.
When did NINEX Foods buy the property?
Three, yeah, about three to four years ago.
Has it been on that site for only three or four years, or...
No.
Oh, okay, oh, okay.
Barrett Logistics had the lease and was leasing it to them, so they decided it was a good facility to buy. They wanted to be close to their headquarters. And several of the stockholders in Ken's Food live in South Row. So they thought it would be good to give back to the community. So then we came in to redefine and put some restrictions on that twenty-four hour day use, seven days a week, put parameters on it. And we talked at that time about going to automation and making this investment.
I remember that.
Then, the next time we came in, we thought, well, this is how we'll do it. We'll come off the front and we'll go off this side, and we'll add one hundred and forty-five thousand square feet, and that will make the investment palatable and worthwhile. But then when we found all these constraints with the site and the issues, we had to regroup and figure out, how can we still use the site and use it a... and figure out, how can we still use the site and use it effectively with as little harm to the community? And that's why we're here today.
Okay, that's, that's the only question I've got.
Okay.
Couple of questions, one more than one is that we give the neighbors the opportunity when they speak, and if they wanna make special conditions approved prior to it going anywhere else, they have the right to ask the board to do that, number one.
And as long as it's within your jurisdiction to do that.
That's right. Or any, anything to do with the project. We have the authority to make any kind of, you know, decision to go on, over the whole project.
Well, I'm, I'm not sure I'd go that far from a legal premise, but I, I agree with you generally, okay? Because there are certain things you can't put in a decision that would be against the law, basically.
Right.
Yeah.
And the other, the, the other issue is, is, it's, it's more of a recommendation that, because I've looked into it a couple of times on the building, that if the neighbors would like, and it's just a suggestion to them to bring up when they discuss it, that on the end of the building that's off of the Deerfoot Road section, if they thought, you know, the direction of that building properly would be to put false windows up on the top floor of that building, and not windows that are actual windows, but they're false windows, so when you look out at the building, it breaks up that one major attention wall. So it's something they can, you know.
That's another masking technique, I don't think Ken's would have a problem with that.
Right.
Uh, we, we just shied away from windows, because most people don't like to see office buildings next to them.
Well, it depends, it just, I mean, it's been done in some different places in the, in Massachusetts that have done it that way, to break up the major walls.
Those are the types of, those are the types of architectural things we would be very pleased to do.
And the other thing is, for the zoning board to realize that across the street where Ted's is now, that building there, which was pre-approved by the board, is fifty-five feet tall on the back of that building. And we approved back in four or five years ago, four years ago, for a four-story building off of Route eighty-five and Route nine also, which was up to the four-story height also. So this is a little bit higher than that. So this is not something that's being done by the first time, except for five feet. So, any further questions with the board? All right, we're gonna open it up to the public. You have to state your name, your address, and speak on the speaker. Thank you.
I'm at seventy-five Deerfoot Road, is this on?
Yep.
Can you hear me, okay. So, um, I just wanted to make a couple of points. One is that I think, first of all, this is really a terrible time of year to try to assess the visual impact of this kind of monstrosity in that location. Sixty-five feet is, as I'm sure you know, over six residential stories. That is enormous, and it's not anything like Ted's, actually, because it's a huge rectangular structure, plopped right in the middle of the field. And I think talking about trying to camouflage it is like talking about taking the Federal Reserve Building and plopping it there and trying to, you know, I mean, you can't even plant trees that are that tall. It, it takes years to, to establish anything that would have any sort of mitigating impact. And in the meantime, I, I, I really don't believe that the properties that have a direct view of the building or the proposed addition are the only ones that would be very detrimentally impacted by this. I think it would really change the look of that whole area. I don't think I'll be able to see it from my property, I still don't wanna drive by it every day. I think it's gonna look completely, just like this huge shoebox sitting right there, and there's a reason why we have the zoning code. I, you know, I, I wanna preemptively respond to something that I believe was mentioned by the board when we were all discussing the twenty-four seven issue, which is that, well, you moved into a property that abutted an industrial zone, so you should know that things can happen. Yes, that's true, but what we also understood was that things would happen within the parameters of zoning and of reasonable zoning. This is an enormous variance from what should be enforced zoning code. The height is crazy, I don't think, I, I mean, I, I won't speak for everybody, I think generally, people would not object to, you know, a lateral, um, expansion, that's fine, but this kind of height, this kind of, um, just imposition on the, on the visual aspect of the area, I, is, is just something that none of us signed up for and should not be allowed. I think under the, the zoning bylaws, the benefit has to outweigh the detrimental impact to the area. And sixty-three thousand dollars of taxes a year, I don't believe outweighs the detrimental impact to the area, when you're talking about so many homes in the area, not just the two who can see down on the roof. There are all sorts of other homes that are gonna be able to see parts of it, especially when the leaves aren't on the tree. So, um, let's see, those are some of my issues. Actually, I think I hit all my issues. So, um, maybe other people have something to say, too. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Everybody, I'm Dave Sears at seventy-four Deerfoot. So I'm one of the houses that is kind of across the street, and, and we're up really, really high, two houses away from the Vet, so anybody down Deerfoot would, would know that. And Jim and Bill did come up, and, and we, we spent a little bit of time trying to look over this. I do have a neighbor who's almost directly across the street, Raj, who it's, impacts him either further, but I wanted to just clarify a couple of things real quick. I think, Bill, you, you mentioned, I think it's, I think it was an error, but you said it would be four to five hundred yards off of Deerfoot, I think it's four or five hundred feet, right? Okay, because if you're gonna move the building five football fields away from Deerfoot, I, I have less to say. But the, in, in addition, the balloons are kinda tough, and I know you guys did what you, you did, and I, and I, I appreciate that and I respect that. Balloons are blown all over the place a lot, so it was really difficult to see. I had to stand out there at one point for ten or fifteen minutes to try to see, okay, let me find when the balloon stopped, you know, or its highest point. So, the building from us up high will be above the horizon, if I got the balloons right. So, the trees that we saw way off in the difference, we're gonna see a, we're gonna see a, a building instead up in the height. And there, there's two, there's two things about this. One is, one is view, and, and, you know, uh, you know, Bill, you're right, I mean, we, we want the views, we, I move there, because there are spectacular sunsets. But it's obviously also value, so what, what is the value, do I lose value on my house? The common sense answer is that, you know, the, the closer our residences are to any commercial property, and I'll, I'll say the worse the commercial property looks, not that I think you'd make a bad-looking building, but it, it's gonna decrease the value of our property. I can't say how much, I'd, I'd love to come up and say there was a dollar amount, but we can, we can also agree that not anyone in this room, even my neighbors, want this building in our front yard, including Bill and Jim. So I can't put a price on what it's gonna devalue my property, but, I mean, I just put a huge amount of money into it. I am nervous, obviously, that I've just, I've just done something really, really stupid. There was a couple other points here. It's, it's not also, the, the building is not just gonna be visible to me and Raj, it's, and we're actually so high up that if it's interfering with the horizon for us, some people who are, who are lower, who I know have seen the balloons down on Deerfoot, I, I think it might be much, much worse. I, I wish we had a better way to do this as far as the balloons and actually put something up that would stay there and be rigid, and, and, I mean, I'd invite anybody on the board and the chairman to come, come, come to my house and take a look, you'll, you'll see what it would, what it would be like, but, uh, the balloons are tough, and, and, you know, I appreciate you put them up there three times. I think, uh, I think that's really all I wanted to have, thank you, appreciate it.
On a comment on the, the issue of the houses' expenses and costs, the thing about it is, the residents that were built in the back of that, those houses were sold cheaper to the fact of that project which was originally there. Also, under the regulations of the state, any houses that are within commercial areas, that automatically happens, and it's nothing that the board can use as a decision to non-approve anything is because of that. Just so you know that. Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Raj Rajambati, and I'm on seventy-six Deerfoot, I'm a dearth neighbor. I bought this property last year, so last July. So I was about to comment on the same thing, right? I mean, the property values, we paid a price to get in there without knowing that this is going to happen, and the visual effects of it are really detrimental to my house. It looks, I mean, it looks like a red, like she said, someone said, it's like a box. I'm pretty sure none of us want to see a box in front of their house, or behind their house, or beside their house. Whatever masking we use, it is detrimental to neighbors like me who can directly have some impact, but there are other neighbors who are not here, from their backyards, they can see this box. I mean, when they are seeing on the deck, they can see this box, right? That's the visual aspect of it, right? And I don't know what kind of noise pollution this can cause, and nobody has any estimates of that, right? I mean, we are, I'm not a sound engineer to get the noise pollution for that. That's the second point I want to make. And the third thing is.
Can you re-clarify that?
I mean, right now, again, I'm a software guy, so there is like, right now, a five-foot building right now, and you are making it like twenty or thirty foot, right? Obviously, the twenty-four by seven operations are going to increase, and it's going to increase the noise pollution around the neighborhood. I have seen some emails saying that it triggered the sound alarms in some of the houses. Not in my house, because I don't have one, but we don't know what kind of noise it's going to generate, and what kind of impact it's going to have.
Okay.
Right? And, I'm sorry, I forgot the last thing. Yeah, this is like my first time I attended this kind of meeting, and I heard something about hardship, right? I don't know if it is hardship for Ken's. So, if I hear that right, did you say that, I mean, you would, if you don't increase a building by sixty-five foot and try to use the area that's around the current building, you are going to incur like a two to three million cost? Is that the reason why you are going to increase sixty-five foot?
No, if we change the. Excuse me, sir, would you use your mic closer?
Bill Pizon, uh, Bill Pizoni again. No, it, it is if they have to reconfigure and put a bunch of different pods off. Because the one thing everybody should realize is that maybe Ken's won't do it, because they've got a plan for how they wanna work this, but if Ken's leaves, somebody can come there, they can go up to forty-five feet, not even have to come here.
Okay, excuse me, I wanna correct you on that. And the thing is, that prior to Ken's Foods buying this piece of property, a person which did recommend to buy it, that wanted to put up two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand square feet of a four-story building over that whole site. He didn't do it after, but he did wanna do that, so what you're saying is a hundred percent right.
No, I, I mean, and Ken's isn't gonna do it, but I mean the existing building that's there. So you wouldn't have just a cube at one end that's at sixty-five feet, you'd have forty-five feet running that whole expanse, and you especially would see that rooftop.
And then they'd have the, excuse me, then they'd have the right to come in for a use variance for a four-story, on top of that.
They can go to forty-five feet.
Yeah, but the four-story, if they wanted to go.
If they wanted to, yeah, right. But they, they can do it by right at forty-five feet. I mean, I think, this is the lesser of all the evils that I could see out there for this site, because I did sit through hearings where there was gonna be a campus built there, which I didn't think would ever survive, because it was in a bad time, and luckily, it didn't go forward. And we've got a, a business like Ken's there now. And as far as noise is concerned, the operation is, there's not gonna be any trucks out back anymore, and that's what set off some of the alarms, was all the truck activity out back.
I'm sorry, but I still, I, I don't think I understood the answer about the three million that you had to spend. The, is that the reason why you had to go sixty-five foot? Or there's no way other than going sixty-four foot? You cannot do this.
If we wanted to incur another, probably, three and a half, two and a half to three million, in that, in that range, by doing little jigs and zaggs to make the, to get the space in the area that we needed, that's what they would have to do. Ken's isn't gonna do that, though. They can sell this property and they can go build a five-hundred-thousand-square-foot warehouse, the height they want, even within zoning, all with the robotics put in, in another community for a lot less. They've made a commitment here, they wanna stay here. That's why they're doing it, and that's why we're here.
Yeah, and, and what happens after Ken's, we are speculating, but, yeah, that's all I have, thank you.
No, I, just, I'd like to answer that, because they're, they're gonna expend about thirty-five million dollars. Their headquarters is in Marlboro, they ship over to here and out, they're not gonna, they aren't going anywhere, that company is gonna be here.
I, I, I know that, right, but the tax revenue that they're bringing to Southborough is like some sixty-three thousand?
No, 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 that's the increase over the million they've already added to that site since they came here.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay.
Hi, I'm Tom Gittin, seventy-three Flag Road, I just have a question. Are we gonna see a lot more trucks?
No, actually, I, I spoke with Jim about that, because a lot of the trucks that are coming there now are bringing materials back and forth from Ken's. So your count is probably gonna remain around the same, which we said at the time, we'd probably get to a max of about a hundred and eleven, a hundred and twelve when we were here before. And right now, they're doing it about, well, the last month or so, it's probably been close to that, but normally, it's around ninety to ninety-five. So it's, it's gonna remain the same, it's just gonna be much more efficient interior.
The, the other thing that people need to know is that, you know, when the Mass Highway goes through and they do the new development, you won't have to go down to Route eighty-five and make the U-turns anymore, you'll be able to go on the eastbound through the development and go straight across, so it'll eliminate all the traffic going the other way, when that gets done, eventually it will get done, because it's going to go up through Madison Hill and down, where Madison Hill has the emergency access. The reason that was built that way, that is the condition of the road going to be done by my Haas, Mass Highway, eventually, to make the, the intersection onto Route nine off of the other partial road in the bottom. Yes, sir?
Just to follow up to his question, just common sense hit me. Janesh Gandhi, six Kenley Lane. Will it increase the frequency of the trucks? I know the number was mentioned, but the frequency, if you become more efficient, common sense tells me there will be more trucks coming in.
Just, just a comment. That's the number of truck trips a day, it's not the number of trucks going through there, because there's less trucks than that.
Okay. Number of trucks going as transactions, not necessarily as trips, okay.
So is that the end of any?
Yeah.
Hi, Patrick Daniel, seventy-nine Deerfoot Road. So, last October, we had a first proposal, and it was around, um, something like a hundred forty-five thousand square feet with two stories. So the total of cubic yard was around a hundred sixty-one thousand. So, when we look at this proposal, it goes forty percent over that, to about two-hundred-twenty-nine thousand.
That's not necessarily true, because that was the footprint, a hundred forty-five thousand square feet. We can go up another fif- another story.
Correct, but your proposal in October was to stay flat at two, two-story.
Ah, I don't know if it was.
Yep, yes, yes, it was. So, I'm just curious to know what type of automation will force you to go forty percent above than what you told us in October?
You wanna address that, because.
Excuse me, sir, you need to use the mic.
Jim Born, Ken's Foods. We know that we have one opportunity to, to do this, we don't wanna disrupt your area beyond this one time, and we're having a phenomenal, uh, growth spurt, and we wanna be able to build this for the long term. We don't wanna keep coming back, the case.
And isn't there like a compromise, you can go to three stories and stay at forty-five thousand?
That's where the, the three million.
Sales are, will always happen, I mean, you're always gonna grow and.
The thing is, I'll make a statement here, is that when they originally came in front of us, and we did the sound barrier and everything, it was stated that they would be coming back to do an addition on the building over a certain amount of time. So this is, you know, the process is something they've recommended prior to this, and then this new addition is different than that.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Bob Caminitz, Ten Orchard Road, I just wanted to address your point, Mr. Chairman, on that. If you look back at the record, which I have, there's never any mention of an addition, there's a mention of internal, um, they're, they're going to be, have a big internal overhaul with the automation, but there's never any mention of an addition to the facility in that original proposal.
I'm pretty sure there was.
I just read it, I just read it before I came here, but.
We, we got, we got an approval for a hundred and forty-five thousand square foot addition.
He's talking about the original twenty-four seven proposal.
Again, at the end of the day, they could come back again and get the additional height, because they would've been allowed to, so we're kinda arguing about, right, nothing.
The only, the only point I wanted to make was about the, the benefit to the town. We've heard a lot about the twenty-five to thirty million dollar investment, but of We've heard a lot about the twenty-five to thirty-million-dollar investment, but of course, because KENS will be using an exemption, we'll never see a dime of taxes on that twenty-five to thirty-five million of investment that KENS is making. The only people who will see a benefit from that is KENS, and the only benefit the town will get monetarily is a six percent increase in the current tax that KENS is paying. Thank you.
The, the thing that, as far as this, this design of this building, that I would think that the residents ought to come think about, is if they sell this building, and somebody come in and puts up a commercial building versus, you know, office building or whatever. The thing about this site is, is the very non-lightable site, where if you get a commercial building on there of a couple of hundred thousand square feet, or a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand square feet, at three and a four stories high with windows on every six feet, I mean, it would completely light the neighborhood up, and it's something that, you know, will be able to be done without coming in front of this board. So it's something that, you know, you people, I think, just so you know that that could happen, and that would completely change that site and the location there of what it would do to the location of the abuttes, because it's, would change the site completely, a hundred percent, versus just a, a storage building that we presently have. So it's something that people should, you know, consider and think about. Because it, you know, if it did, they did sell it and that, I mean, there's not very many commercial buildings, storage buildings being built anymore. Everything basically in the area and the different surrounding towns that are being built are office buildings. You know, different types of things, medical centers and all kinds of things, which will take and completely light up that area three times or four times as much as it is presently, which would make a big difference with the neighbors, just so you realize that. And that's something that would be done without coming in front of this board. It'd be automatic approval through the building inspector and the planning board and the town. So, do the board members have any further discussion?
Did, in-
Excuse me, yes, ma'am.
Barbara Con is three Orchard Road. I just wanted, can you explain to me again, Mr. Bartolini, what the town plans on doing about these trucks that are going through residential areas and turnarounds?
All right, what is going to happen is, in a few minutes, I'm going to explain that, all right?
Okay, thank you.
But, do the boards have any other questions presently?
Well, I was, back to the question, one thing, obviously, it's the, the mass that is, seems to be bothering the neighbors more than anything at this point. Obviously, the whole high bay portion of the site, it seems to be to that far end. Was any design consideration on moving the high bay further down, or creating a staggered slope? So maybe you could, I didn't understand the plantings that, on the roof, that couldn't, because of FDA, you can't have-
You can't have vegetation on the side of the buildings or anything like that.
Like, what defines vegeta, like grass? I mean, obviously, you got-
No vines.
Oh, vines.
Because we had, we had looked at doing like, a little metal trellis off the side, so the vines could climb up it. So it would change with the seasons. We all thought it was a great idea, but then the Fed said, no.
Again, this could be more of a planning board thing, but if you just staggered it a little bit, just had a couple, like, staggered it in on the end, you could throw some little trees on the, on the roof, that wouldn't be vines. You can't do that.
No, but, but we can, you know, put little jogs and things like that to mask it. That's what I'm talking about when I say, massing techniques. And that's something that the planning board will look at and ask us to do anyhow. Because they're not, they're not really going to want to look at a flat wall. I'm, you know, we're willing to do colors, we're willing to do, you know, like Lee said, if you want to-
Some architectural features.
No disrespect, but I mean, that's a very, very plain schematic that you're showing, that is, probably makes it look as scary as possible.
Believe me-
And I know it's more of a planning board thing, like Jeff is saying, but aesthetically, there's, I mean, I've been involved in projects where you can, certain levels, certain, certain trims, certain-
And they're happy to do that.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of architectural detail that could go in, that would make it look significantly nicer than, than what's being shown in-
Believe me, we, we asked the architects to, to start looking at some design.
I understand this was for schematic purposes and showing this.
And they said, well, this is all we can do for schematics, but there are a lot of things we can try to incorporate when we get into the real design of the building, which actually is that site plan approved.
And again, I know that's more of a planning board thing, but it's, I don't know, it's maybe something we could talk about, because there's certainly ways to-
It, it's going to be referenced in this record that we've committed to doing it a half a dozen times.
And then in the schematic, again, it could be just a schematic, you're showing rooftop units on top of the highest part, on the high bay. You know, can those be brought down? There's no reason to put them-
On the schematic?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, there's going to be a parapet, and we're going to have to come, today-
No, but what I'm saying,
Yeah, I understand.
You got the white ones up there, there's, there are ways, I know, of bring these down to the roof, you don't even have to extend.
And, and believe me, the planning board-
I don't want to put a parapet on top of-
No, the planning board is going to tell us, this is what you have to do. We've got rules and regulations on design that we have to comply with.
All right, thank you. That's it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I think maybe you already addressed this, but if you're looking, really, you're talking about cubic feet, what's the effect if, rather than being up twenty feet, you're up, I don't know, fifteen feet, and you extend, you know, further, in, in, towards the west?
Well, we can't really extend further in the other directions, because we're getting closer to the wetlands. Going up, if you start to stagger it, you lose the, the-
Efficiency?
Capacity and the efficiency out of the equipment. Which means, then you got to put in extra motors and other things like that, that, it's, it's a real, that's where the extra couple of million bucks is, if we try to gerrig it.
So, this, this addition that you have, that's sixty-five feet tall, that's going to be all-new, like, robotically?
Actually, the whole building is going to be all robotics.
Well, I, actually, that was kind of my question, so it's actually beyond just that, right? Okay, right, but, so, but the remainder of the building won't be as tall, so, I, I, maybe I'm just kind of losing how the efficiency is lost, because you've obviously got a lower height in the other parts of the, of the facility.
Unfortunately, I get lost when I talk to these guys on the robotics. I, I couldn't tell you the efficiencies. I wouldn't want to try to, because I would misquote something.
So was it more a matter of having certain equipment in this new building that has the capability to be that high, that you don't have anywhere else?
All storage would be in that building. You need to add additional cranes if you change the height. Add more containers and that's what it costs.
Right, okay. All right, yeah, my, my other question was, was more about the breaking it up, but I think our, my fellow board members already addressed that.
I guess I, I just want to come back to the question I asked before, and I'm not sure I asked it right, so. You know, there, there was the twenty-four-seven application, and I don't, I don't even remember what that was, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen? And then there was the, special permit for the total-
For the hundred-and-forty-five thousand.
So is, is, is this what all this has been building up to? And that after this, you wouldn't be expecting to come back to the board again? I understand you would need to come back to the planning board, and I definitely think that-
We, we don't anticipate having to come back to this board again if we get these permits, because we want to move very efficiently through the planning board as well, because KENS is on a timeline to, to get this built and finished, because they need the capacity. And if they don't, they're going to have to go somewhere else.
I, I also remember, on the first of these, about the twenty-four-seven application, there, I read it again before the hearing, and there's these very complicated
Right.
provisions about to test whether the wall blocked the sound and things like that. Were there follow-up complaints or issues about the noise, so the wall has been built?
The wall's been up for a while.
And have there been other complaints about noise or noise issues after that?
Most of the neighbors that live behind it.
Nothing through, nothing through the building inspector's office.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think it's, it did what it was supposed to do. And if there was an issue and there was something going on, Jim would get a call and he would address it as well.
Okay, I've got some comments, but would you like to make a statement, sir?
Manager, yes, Johnny, sixteen A Bantry. I'd like to start out by a quick comment, and I guess I'm not quite clear if I understood you correctly about your concern of, like, an office or medical building coming in there with a light issue. To my understanding, most of the offices close after like, five, six? And most, most of the medical offices are closed after about seven, eight o'clock?
Medical buildings would be open twenty-four hours a day.
I'm sorry?
The parking lights are on for security.
The town does have some ability to put some limitations or restrictions on the lighting.
Medical buildings would be open twenty-four hours a day.
Sorry?
Medical buildings would be open twenty-four hours a day.
Well, I guess it depends on the medical building.
I mean, we don't know what will happen, but it's all possible.
We're not here to discuss an office.
Hypothetically.
The other, I guess, the other question or issue I wanted to kind of raise was, do we have any estimation or timeframe from Mast dot in regards to when the Crystal Pond restructuring is going to potentially take place?
No.
Yeah, I can say it's at ninety percent stage. I am the private sector chair of the four-ninety-five partnership, and we've been working with Mast dot for ten to twelve years on that intersection now. And we're finally at this design stage, so it's probably, if we're lucky, if we're lucky, five years if the funding's available.
Okay.
Okay?
So we're talking five years plus?
Yeah, understand that the Mast dot is just not this. It's the completely reconstruction of four-ninety, four-ninety-five from two-ninety down to the Matt's Turnpike also.
I am quite familiar with Mast dot issues, given the flag and Route nine and four-ninety-five intersections as well.
So it's, it's all one big project?
I totally understand that. Just trying to get a ballpark timeframe, that if we are looking at having this reconstruction, having this development taking place, with some of these ideas that the trucks are going to be rerouted to be able to go to nine east a little bit more effectively or efficiently, was just trying to get a potential timeframe of when that may take place.
We were talking more about the efficiency of the trucks on our site.
Okay.
Not, once I get back on a route now, we're going to address that. But I can tell you that KENS and EMC that owns all that property on the other side of the street would love to see that happen sooner than later.
I'm sure they would.
Yeah.
But reality is, we're dealing with a state department, and God knows when that's going to take place.
Yeah.
The other, I guess, and I, I'll be kind of interested if you guys can explain to me a little bit better how we are increasing the warehouse space by, if I understood you correctly, ninety-five-hundred thousand square feet by going up?
The footprint, the footprint, yeah.
Okay, so then the storage space is going to be even larger increase in that. How, how is it that the number of truck trips are not going to be impacted, given the increase in this magnitude?
Yep, Jim Bourne. Today, we store the, a lot of the packaging material at the facility, so we take delivery, we ship it to the plant, we bring it back at the end of the runs.
Okay.
So there's a lot of-
Back and forth.
But wasted back and forth. There's finished goods that are at the facility that are now going to be located in this new addition, so that all the finished goods will come to the facility and ship out once. Today, there's a lot of back and forth with packaging, with pieces of the retail business back to the plant with the food service. There's a lot of wasted trucks that just are going to go away.
So packaging is going to be done at another facility?
Packaging is going to go back to the manufacturing facility where it belongs, deliver directly there. And the difference, the delta will be made up by the finished goods that are going to reside there.
Predominantly, you're going to be warehousing the finished goods.
That's where we want to be.
Shipping it out to distributors and-
Today, it's, we're disjointed.
Okay. All right, and you're estimating that the number of truck trips is similar?
I don't think it's going to change at all, I don't.
Great, thank you.
Okay, that's, yes, yep.
Dave Sears again, seventy-four Deerfoot. Jim, Bill, I think we, I think we talked about this at a smaller meeting we had, but are you, are you disturbing trees that are existing right now? Or are you just, you're just talking about proposing putting a building that's already disturbed and lawn and-
Yeah, I, I don't, are there even trees on that side now? There's shrubs along the side of it, that'll get moved in the building, and then they'll probably plant some trees along that side, you know.
Okay, and do you know if you're maximizing that area that's available, where the building is? I, there's a-
The footprint, you mean?
Yeah.
If you, excuse me, if you, wait a minute, I am going to make a comment on that
Okay.
area, and I think the neighbors, I think, would be impressed with it. I don't know if the developer will be.
I'm good.
The thing is, it's, it would be done by the planning board, but it could be recommended by the zoning board. I have seen a lot of commercials, buildings built in residential districts. And at the end of that building on Deerfoot Road, you could build a thirty-five-foot dirt banking, V-shaped. And on top of that, you could put ten or twelve-foot pine trees, which those trees will grow, and you make the top of it twenty feet wide. And you make the top of those pine trees, which will grow three to three and a half feet a year. So, in five years, they'll be up as far as the height of the building, which would completely take away, you know, the seeing and of the building. It is not a big expense to put a berm up, dirt berm like that. But it'd be something that, you know, if the neighbors would be considered, considering of it. I mean, personally, I think it's a very good recommendation, and if the board would consider that, that we make that part, because that would be something that would, because I think that this building technically should be approved, and, but in lieu of doing it so as proper for the neighbors also.
You just got to be careful with something like that, because there's other issues other boards control. So there's wetland issues, there's, there's other issues that they're going to have to deal with. So I don't want to recommend something that-
There's nothing to do with wetlands there.
Well, it's, it's, everything-
Wetlands could change it, and they could do it on a, do a waiver or whatever that has to be done.
It could.
It would be against the neighbors.
Are you saying recommend or, or make it a condition?
What?
Are you saying recommend that or make it a condition?
I think that we should make a recommendation.
All right.
Recommendation would be fine.
Yeah, that would be fine.
But there's plenty of room.
In conjunction with them, but your riverfront area is like, right next to it.
So the Conservation Commission would have to buy into this whole process.
The riverfront area, we have to be two-hundred feet from the river that runs by the other.
Into the riverway.
And you can't impact it, we're, we're not in it, but it runs right here.
Well, you're not going beyond the construction of the parking lot existing, are you?
No, if you-
Right.
If you built a berm, you would be.
From here, from the edge of the parking lot to that wall, is probably where the rock is.
It's a hundred-and-fifty-two feet. I paced it out the other day.
Not where the, the access road is, because where that, that ends, you go right here, right on up.
Regardless, a recommendation?
Recommendation, I have no problem, as long as it complies and, and we get approval from the board.
So, that's something that, you know, and it, and it's something that we could just make a recommendation to the planning board for the neighbors. The other, the other issue, which is on the traffic, is that I think the proper way of going forward, if the board agrees, that we have to make a extension on this. And in talking to Karen Gallagher, to set up a meeting and when it would happen, and I would recommend that we put this back on the agenda for the twenty-ninth, which we meet again. And we'll either maybe have some answers or some decisions from her on the traffic issue with the trucks and, and the, and the signs and everything, so we can put it into the conditions, unless there's another way that you think we could do it to get it on the decision.
I think if you require us to work with Public Works and the Board of Selectmen to address traffic signage on the roadways in Southborough, and controlled by Southborough, and to also petition the state for the sections that are Route nine. I don't think it's Route nine, though, I think it's just the, the streets that are up it, so we have control over it here in town.
Well, the main issue is Route nine.
You mean the stacking on it?
The U-turn. That's the major issue.
Oh, the-
And what we are going to, we are going to discuss-
You mean the U-turn on Middle?
Yes.
Yeah, well, that's why we have control, Southborough, when I say we, Southborough has control of Middle Road and, and Parkerville and General Henry Knox, so we-
But they have no control of the U-turn in Route nine, Karen says.
No, they don't.
So that's why it has to go through Mass Highway.
Because you're not on Middle there, you're, you're on, just on Route nine, you're not-
Oh, oh, all right, I get it, I get it, I get it.
First, I'd like to see that gone.
Yeah.
What?
But that has nothing to do with us, but, but, just that cut through, the, the, the break there where, on Route nine, I just think causes a lot of traffic issues, but that's a-
Yeah, I mean, I'd have you-
Another topic enough for this board.
I would like to have you put it in as a condition that we have to work with her with addressing that. And we would work cooperatively with Karen and the Selectmen to petition the, you know, the state, Mast dot if you want. Mast dot's not going to, they're not going to close it, though, I can tell you that.
What?
They're not going to close it, they won't.
Close what?
That-
The U-turn?
The U-turn.
I mean, I know, years ago, they did further up in Westborough, that one.
Yeah, well, and there used to be a connection at Parkerville, too, that you could go through. They closed that one, and until they do the work in front here, they're probably not going to close it.
Well, they won't close it, but they will prevent the U-turn, and we have the authority to do it, which we've already done. The issue is getting the signs put up to prove it. And to propose it, which we have to get permission from them to have the signs put up, which we didn't do originally, which we should have.
So, wait a minute, I guess, just, just-
Because if the signs are up, then the police officers can give them a ticket for illegally making that U-turn.
Okay, that I can see. But I guess my, my question was, I thought the issue was not just making the U-turn, like a car making a U-turn there. It's making a U-turn and using Middle Road and-
Using Middle Road.
General Henry Knox and the other one.
There's two issues here. One is making the U-turn, and, and I've, I've seen it happen. A tractor-trailer cannot successfully make the U-turn in one swoop, they have to stop and back and turn, and next thing, you know, Route nine shut down for a little bit there.
Right, and-
So then to avoid that, so what ends up happening is you hit the panic button and you go straight across onto Middle, and then, now where the heck am I? And then, you know, then you're going to take that first, you know, left onto...
Henry Knox.
Is it Henry Knox?
Yeah.
My first left, and then you're looping back, so.
All right. I mean, I just want to make sure I'm not going to the state looking to have them close down full U-turns for automobiles, you know, because most of us use that.
But I'm saying, I don't, I mean, like they did in, you know, up the street in Westboro, I think it should be eliminated, because I don't think it's the safest.
It's not safe, it isn't safe.
Now, Mr. Pizzoni, I presently said in the beginning of this meeting that we weren't preventing residential vehicles and stuff to make the U-turn, it's strictly tractor-trailers.
Okay.
That is going to be done.
And then no access for tractor-trailers? I mean, so you prevent a U-turn, but then no tractor-trailer taking a left in the middle either?
Yeah, we should, we should, we should put those up ourselves.
It's the board to make...
That we do have, we as Southborough does.
Southborough has the authority to do that.
We do have the ability to do.
So, well, the thing is, the board wants to make a recommendation of taking and getting the decision done through Mass Highway and Karen through that way, or do we want to let it go the other way and mandate that they have to do it through them, but then we lose complete control over that decision? So what does the board want to do?
You kind of lost me there.
Well, one thing you could do is just continue the hearing, and then you have more information on what?
Well, that's what I'm recommending. And the thing is, in knowing that I get permission to do it, which I couldn't do it, but I talked to Karen, and she said I'd have to get permission from the board so I can talk to her, and between now and the twenty-ninth, we'll be able to have the information somewhat from her, at least enough, whether she would comment on whether we go through her with just Mass Highway or through with the Board of Selectmen, like Mr. Pizzoni said, and then on the meeting of the twenty-ninth, we'd be able to finalize that and do a final decision on the project, which is only two weeks from now.
Oh, the twenty-ninth of this month?
Yes, of June.
You had me, uh...
No, it's, it'll be two weeks, and that way there, we could properly...
Can I just, I need to check my calendar, because...
We already have, we already have an agenda for the twenty-ninth.
Just to clarify, Lee, you're talking about making a condition to be, to work with the town as far as the signings and the U-turns?
We'll see what she says and which way to do it properly.
Okay, so you just want to basically have a pause, stop?
What?
You want to, you want to have a pause to talk to Karen?
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's done properly.
We are scheduled to meet on the twenty-ninth?
Oh, yes.
Oh.
We've got three items.
What time does that start at?
Starts at seven-thirty. We'll talk about that after. So the thing is, we make a motion to continue this public hearing until...
The twenty-ninth?
Eight-thirty, on the twenty-ninth.
Did you just make a motion?
We need a motion.
I move to continue the public hearing until June twenty-ninth, and you said eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. What is the deadline on this?
Oh, it's, you got to waste.
So the special permit is August fifteenth?
No problem. Okay, so we're all set. Thank you. Okay? Thank you very much.
I would have told you you needed an extension, you know that.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure we don't have those issues.
Put up a berm and then put planted trees on top of it?
Yeah, what about a big dirt berm with twenty-foot pine trees on top, it's fifty feet high. Mr. Chairman?
Excuse me, what? Did you get the idea?
Want a, a two-minute, five-minute recess?
Two minutes.
Well, we need a motion, sir.
Motion to have a five-minute recess?
Two minutes.
Second?
Karen?
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Shut your mics, please.
The Board of Appeals of the Town of Southborough will hold a public hearing in the Thomas J. McGollum Haring Room of the Southborough Townhouse, Seventeen Common Street, on Wednesday, June fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, at eight p.m. to consider the application of sixty-eight Flag Road, special permit to convert a single-family home into a two-family dwelling pursuant to Section one seventy-four, eight dot seven C three, conversion of a single-family residence into a two-family in accordance with Section one seventy-four dash nine G, two-family dwelling. The Board of Appeals of Town of Southborough shall hold a public hearing in the Thomas J. McGollum Haring Room of the Southborough Townhouse on Wednesday, June fifteenth, two thousand, two thousand sixteen, at eight oh five p.m. to consider the application of seventy Flag Road, special permit to convert a single-family home into a two-family dwelling pursuant to Section one seventy-four, eight dot, eight dot seven C three, conversion of a single-family residence into a two-family in accordance with Section one seventy-four nine G, two-family dwelling. Copies of the application may be reviewed at the Office of the Building Department at the Townhouse during normal business hours. Leo F. Bartolini, Junior Chairman.
All right. Karen, would you read the other letters that we have received from town?
This letter is from Joe Morrow, Fire Chief. Karen, be advised that I have discussed with Jack Barnalini in regards to converting two single-family homes into duplexes at sixty-eight and seventy Flag Road. I do not have any issues with the change, as it does not affect the footprint and access to the existing homes. You may pass this on to the ZBA if it comes up as discussion at the future meeting. Joe. And then I have a letter from the Board of Health. Karen, Dennis asked me to email you to let you know that the septic systems at sixty-eight and seventy Flag Road can support proposed duplexes. Give Dennis a call if you have any questions. Thank you. Tammy Rice. And then I have a letter from...
Planning Board.
Oh, yes, Planning Board. Yes. Dear Mr. Bartolini, at its regularly scheduled meeting on Monday, May sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, the Planning Board reviewed plans submitted by John Bartolini, Junior, for Wyatt Circle, Southborough, for the conversion of an existing single-family home located at seventy Flag Road in the industrial district to a two-family dwelling as allowed in one seventy-four, eight dot seven C three of the zoning code of the Town of Southborough. Mr. Bartolini submitted plans showing the conversion of the existing attached garage into a two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, two-story dwelling unit, and eliminating one bedroom from the existing dwelling, creating two two-bedroom units. He would be adding parking spaces to be able to accommodate four parked vehicles. There will be a minimal, there will be minimal alterations to the existing landscape. Mr. Bartolini reported that he had had to, consulted with both the Fire Chief and the Board of Health for review of the plans, and reported that everything was in compliance, as the septic system can accommodate a four-bedroom residential dwelling, and the egress and egress can accommodate emergency vehicles. After reviewing the proposed proposal, the Board voted unanimously, five to oh, Morris, Mills, Jenk, Stein, and Latrell, to recommend approval of the special permit for conversion of the existing home at sixty-eight Flag Road to a two-family dwelling, and making its vote to the Planning Board noted that this conversion was in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood and would offer great, greater diversity in housing options. The Planning Board made its recommendation to approve the special permit with no conditions. Sincerely, Hillary Young Carney.
All right, is that all the conditions? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, there were two letters, one for sixty-eight.
Excuse me, sir, you need to use the mic, Jack.
There were two letters, one for sixty-eight and seventy Flag Road.
Oh, I picked up on that it only referenced sixty-eight.
They're exactly the same.
Yeah, I didn't get one.
The other thing is, that you make your presentation, and what do you call, but you need to recognize your full name, because I'm sitting as the chairman, though they know which Bartolini it is. Thank you.
My name is John Bartolini, Junior. I live at Four Wyatt Circle in Southborough, and I own the properties at sixty-eight and seventy Flag Road. Currently, they are both single-family dwellings. I'm here seeking a special permit for the conversion of a one-family to a two-family under one seventy-four dash eight point seven C three and one seventy-four point nine C two-family dwellings. The requirements for this is fairly simple. It's fifteen thousand square feet of land, no other apartments on the lot, and no exterior alteration to the building on the outside. So where this property is located, it's an overview or in an industrial zone. This land is all industrial. Route nine is here. Flag Road is here. This is sixty-eight Flag Road, it has three acres of land. This is seventy Flag Road, it has one acre of land, both meeting the fifteen thousand square feet. All right, it's accessed, well, to the south of it is Wendy's. This is a auto, auto repair shop, it used to be Watkins', I don't know who's there now. This is Central Motors, they sell automobiles there. To the east, there is a commercial building here. To the north is Laptowich, recently that got sold, I don't know if I Laptowich used to live there, I don't think she still does, but it used to be the old Southborough Dairy. I think Lee will remember that. And then to the, to the west, and in front of these, is a garage that I own, currently own, commercial garage, I use for a warehouse to store automobiles. And then I had a sixty-six Flag Road, which is A and B, which I already got a special permit for, and that is now a duplex, and seventy-two Flag Road, which is A and B, and I received a special permit on that, I want to say around two thousand and eleven for both of these, maybe two thousand and twelve. So the access and egress is... So the access and egress is off of Flag Road. It's a common driveway. Comes down here to 68. Comes over here to 70 Flag Road. The area around here is grassed with some, a little bit of woods, wooded area here and some wetlands. The septic systems are in the front. Nothing will be changed. The, what we are planning on doing is adding, the existing garages, I'm not adding, but changing those into two-bedroom units. So each one of these, what I will do is raise the roof on those and put a second floor. So the existing driveways will stay the same and we'll have four parking spaces here, which is plenty and nothing has to be changed on this side, two parking spaces over here, and I'm going to add three parking spaces up here for that. Landscaping will essentially stay, the landscaping will essentially stay pretty much the same. There will be some shrubbery removal and then some shrubbery put back on. There will, no need to cut any trees or disturb the earth in any way for this project other than to put these three parking spaces in. By the way, this is my son, Michael. He wasn't going to come. I'm glad he did because the easel's broken. So again, this is a little more of a close-up on both of these here, and it's just the garages that are going to be affected. Foundations are going to stay exactly the same. There's not going to be any addition to the building as far as foundations or making them longer, wider, or anything. The only thing that's going to happen is that the, at the garage, right now, there's a window here, two windows here. A door will be in its place and this will be raised up and this roof here to make for a two-floor entrance over here. So, and these will be identical. So right now, this is currently the units that we have now. I'm going to remove a wall here, so this will become two bedrooms and then this will be remaining the same. This is approximately 1,536 square feet of housing now. The addition will be roughly around 1,152 square feet. It'll be an open concept plan here with a galley kitchen, dining room, living room area, half-bath, and then two bathrooms upstairs and two bedrooms upstairs. And again, the other unit is a mirror image, reversed image of the same thing, where again we're going up one floor over and above the existing garage. And again, it's the same exact footprint with an open concept here, two bedrooms and two bathrooms added upstairs, half-bath downstairs. Again, the foundation, everything else stays the same. All I can tell you is that we meet all the requirements, 15,000 square feet, no other apartments on the, in the units, and a minimum alteration. And then I've got favorable reports from the Fire Chief, the Board of Health, and the Planning Board.
Okay. Jeff, any comments or questions?
No, I mean, you mentioned the duplexes you did before. Do you still own those or?
Yes, I do. I own, I actually own all these. I own the garage and I own the two duplexes here.
Well, you still own both of those?
Right.
And the, I guess, actually, that's all the questions.
Thank you. Paul?
I have no questions. The presentation, the materials are pretty clear.
David?
How old, how old's the original built homes on those sites? Like, did you build those things?
Say that again. I did build them, but it's been, seems like yesterday, but I think it's over 20 years.
Just so you know, the legal rule and regulation is anything that's built two years prior to, they can come in for a special to do this.
That's correct.
So it's two years and these, like you said, have been there 20 years.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
I don't have any questions.
Okay. I don't have any either, I guess. Is this something that's going to be done now or?
Yeah. I'll file for a building permit once I get this permit.
All right. Now, I have a question. Any of the abuddies have any comments they'd like to make? If you do, you need to use one of the microphones here, okay? Any comment, ma'am, sir?
I'm Tom getting the 73 Flag.
Push that button.
No, he's got it.
He's got it.
He's got it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I just want to say I don't have a problem with the additions. The only thought I have, Jack, and I wouldn't want this to become a condition, but I don't know if that's wide enough for two cars to pull in or one in, one out, but with all the other traffic that's going to come, if you could make that opening one car deep, wide enough for somebody to pull out and somebody to pull in, it might be a lot nicer on the road.
It's actually pretty.
Otherwise, he's a heck of a good neighbor.
It's a pretty, well, he's a good neighbor, too. It is, it's a pretty wide road. It's wider than you might think.
Ma'am, do you have a comment? You have to use the mic, please. And your name and address, please.
Do I have to push something?
You can pick it up.
No, it's already on.
Karen McCarthy, 54 Flag Road. And so I didn't realize that two of them were already duplexes. So this is just continuing to the other two.
Right, yeah.
All right. And so the impact in the neighborhood's going to be fairly small.
Yeah, minimal, yeah.
Okay, and won't affect property values that we have multifamilies in with single families? So, okay.
I have a question. When did you do the lots, too?
I think it was 2011, I believe.
Okay. That's when he built the first, the condo things, you know, the duplexes.
All right.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, the Board make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Do we have a second?
Start it.
All in favor? Okay. Are there any conditions? The VBA? Okay. And somebody want to make a motion of approval?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hey, do we have a second?
Sure.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. David, would you be able to get the?
It could all be that good.
Who seconded? Who seconded? Who seconded on that motion?
I did.
Jeff seconded.
All right.
See, they're not all hard. Some of them are.
Thank you. Okay, next thing on the agenda. Next thing on the agenda.
Bye, Michael. Good job.
A couple of discussions here. One is that Tom Broglio is retired from the zoning board and we needed an appointment and Jeff Walker is the senior alternate. So he, Jeff, would you be interested in doing that appointment?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'd like to see if the Board would agree to that and we make a motion to send a letter to the Board of Selectmen because within a couple of weeks, they're going to do approvals on it. So I'd like to see the Board if we agree to make a motion to represent Mr. Walker as becoming a full-time member of the Board.
I'll make a motion to accept, to recommend that Jeff be a full-time member of our Board.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Karen, are you all set in what you need to write for that letter?
Yes, I am.
Okay. The other thing is I'd like to, I will make a motion as the chairman that I would like to nominate Andrew as our co-chairman of the Board because that was Tom's position.
I'll second that.
I'll third that.
Okay? So all in favor of that? Okay?
So Bartolini made motion, Eagle second?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Jeff third.
Jeff third.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And the other thing is it'll happen in the future. You will become the senior alternate and then we're going to need another alternate to come into the.
Right.
So that'll something the Board of Selectmen will advertise. All right. The other thing is we have minutes for March 24 to be approved. Dave Eagle wasn't there, so.
So just go, first topic was 255 Turnpike.
Yeah. 255 Turnpike Road. Were there any discussions with this? I mean, there's 225 Turnpike Road. There was Bartolini Builders on Southborough Parkville, 352 Turnpike Road, and then there was discussions on Park Central.
Can I see a copy of that?
Yep. Have you not had a chance, Andrew, to review them?
No, now I see that, I recognize this, yeah.
Okay, otherwise I'll say we can take and we'll wait another, till the 29th if we have to. Okay. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes for March 24?
Do you want to do them by topic, though?
Yeah. I don't know if I sat on everything or didn't.
What?
I don't know if I sat on everything or not.
But you can still make a motion to accept it because it was, has you listed as absent. He's not sitting.
Yeah, well. All right, the motions would be for 255 Turnpike Road, Bartolini Builders, 252 Turnpike Road. That was the sign on the building there for what's-his-name, Ferris. And then our discussion just with Park Central. Do we have to do individual votes?
I think so because different Board members sat.
Okay, so, okay, the 235 Turnpike Road, members that sat?
255.
255. Have a motion to approve those minutes?
Do you guys have the grid?
I moved to appro, Karen, you want to lead?
Do you guys have the, yeah?
No, I don't have the grid in front of me.
All right. Let me just tell you who sat.
Even if you didn't sit, you can approve because it says that you didn't sit.
Hold on, she's going to read who sat.
255 Turnpike Road, the registered marijuana dispensary. Bartolini sat, Dennington sat, Biscule sat, and Deprano's and Williams sat. So those are the people that will need to make the vote and approve.
Okay. So will you make a vote to approve the minutes?
I moved to approve the medical marijuana minutes for.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you.
So then the second one will be Bartolini Builders, Southville and Parkville Road, Dennington sat, Biscule sat, Eagle sat, Deprano's sat. And that was it.
And we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
All right. Then you have 352 Turnpike Road, which was Ferris Development.
That was the sign.
Bartolini sat. Dennington sat, Biscule sat, Eagle sat, and Deprano's sat.
I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
Okay. Second? All in favor?
And then the last topic that evening.
Park Central.
It's Park Central.
Which is David and Paul. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
This is Park Central?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. The next set of minutes are April 20.
Yep. So.
And that was Bartolini Builders, so that would be, Karen, would you?
Dennington, Biscule, Eagle, Deprano's, and Walker.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Okay, I didn't vote on that. I can't.
That's right.
But I didn't sit. Okay. The next one is May 25, 45 Sears Road, two-car garage.
So.
I was absent.
Williams, Williams sat.
I did the same thing.
Dennington sat, Biscule sat, Eagle, and Deprano's sat.
All in favor? I mean, do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept those minutes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor? And I would like to make a public comment that I did not make that meeting, but I did show up at 7 o'clock to make a meeting at 7:30.
I showed up at 7:30 and it was dark.
You did also. So we just, the reason, reason why we weren't here. Okay. One other issue I want to bring up is because of developments and a lot of things that are happening new, I'd like to recommend that the Board consider meeting one more time a month. And I like to meet the second Wednesday of the month so we can help, this time of the year especially, and even if we do it just from now until December, where, because people are trying to build and get things done, and you know, they wait the 20-day appeal period and 30 days to come here and everything, I just think that we owe the Town of Southborough, the residents and developers, the authority to get them time to get permitted better. And we, wait a minute. We can take and do it, and if a regular member can't make it and the alternates can take and fill in on it, then I think that we should be able to do it. And if everybody agrees, the Board agrees to it, I'd like to be able to do it. It would be the third Wednesday of the month plus the last Wednesday of the month.
So basically, two weeks in a row.
Two weeks in a row?
What?
That'd be two weeks in a row?
It'd be two, this, that week, and then we meet the 29th again, so it'd be in two weeks.
So what if you did something like every third Wednesday? And just let that rotate? That way wouldn't be?
Every third Wednesday and the last Wednesday of the month.
Do we have a room?
What? Yes, we will have the room. Well, this is another issue so people realize, within two months, if I'm right, we're not going to be here anymore.
Ever?
We're going to be down at the Senior Center. The Building Department, Zoning Board is something, are leaving this building and going down there for their offices. And if we're going to have our offices there, we're going to have our meetings there also.
So why would you do that?
What?
Why would you do that? It's televised here.
No, they're going to have, down there. And we don't have to be televised, so, but because your office is going to be down there, unless you want to move the whole office down for the meeting, and I have talked to Mark Robidoux, and he's agreed that this is something we should do, to do it proper, that we have all our information and everything there, as in the Building Inspector's Office is going to be there, zoning, electrical, and plumbing.
Well, I know we're not voting on anything about this tonight, but just one thing I think is that some of these meetings, you know, 20, 30, 40 people showed up for the hearing, and so where would all the people?
We have the major room upstairs that holds over 60 people.
At the Senior Center?
Yes.
Okay, so the?
We're going to be downstairs, but we would be able to use that room upstairs if we're going to have a major issue or something.
These meetings need to be taped, though, because?
What?
These meetings need to be taped?
They can come video.
Because you guys, they go so fast. There's a lot of content. This is bigger than other boards.
Yeah, but that's not, the issue, Karen, is the last two Selectmen's meetings that have been down there were videotaped. So they can, we've talked to these people and get it, so they come down and videotape. I'd like to see it videotaped.
Will there be comfortable chairs like here?
I don't have a problem, though, bringing a couple of files to this facility, though.
Well, we talked, this would be the way to do it. Basically, we're not going to have a condition. We'll be told to do it by the building. All right. Okay? My thing is, do the Board agree to have the two meetings a month?
Well, Karen had a decent suggestion. I don't think you quite understood if, can we just rotate them, like, just have them every three weeks?
No, it'll be the second Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month, and the last Wednesday.
Well, I'm just thinking through summertime. I worry that you're not going to get quorums.
What?
I'm worried through the summertime, you might not get quorums.
Well, we're going to, this is why we have to do it. But we, this is something we owe to the residents and the thing, and I just think it's nothing done. And if, you know, what do you call, the alternates agree, then we can, what do you call it? We'd be able, you know, we'll have the seven of us and then we'd be able to have, you know, two people couldn't make it, they wouldn't have to.
Believe it, will we, I mean, like, tonight, we have a pretty full agenda. Will we end up with one or two things on the, I mean, like, last meeting, we had one thing on the agenda that was a, you know, five-minute meeting. I mean, I would rather.
That's the last meeting of the month.
Right. But what I'm saying is, is that I would rather.
Take that meeting and put it on tonight's. Because we have a timeframe that we have to go by, the 30 days.
Correct. But I'm saying, I don't mind meeting additionally if it's, if there's a situation where we have to or need to, as we've kind of done, to be accommodating. But I don't, I'm reluctant to say, let's just schedule it for twice a month and then everyone's going to end up, you know, instead of having four things on the agenda, we end up having meetings with only two things on the agenda.
That's whatever. That's what it's going to be. Because we have to do it that way so it properly can be advertised.
But what I'm saying, I don't mind if there's a situation where we have, where it's a timing issue or it's a, you know, to be accommodating, I don't mind occasionally accommodating it, but I don't, I don't see why we need to.
We have to make an agenda. We have to make it. So that's the legal rules and regulations of.
Right. Right. But we've done, like, as we have, like, with Park Central, for example, we have, like, we have said we have to meet additionally, or we need to.
Yeah, but that's different.
Well, like, today was an additional.
That is an open, public session that's going, that we keep continuing. This is for somebody that somebody's signing and filing for the first time, which has to be done properly.
I, I don't understand. We would make room on the agenda. It would just be a longer agenda. I'm not really, I really don't understand.
No, the issue, the issue is the time.
I understand that.
To go. Wait a minute. To go on the agenda for the end of the month, you have to file by the end of this month to go on the end of next month.
But we don't have.
30 days, which I don't feel is proper.
Well, yeah, but I do. I mean, that's.
We don't have a lot of new applications.
There's not a lot of stuff on the burner.
Well, if something doesn't come, we don't have to have the meeting.
That's my point. So if we need to, we'll meet, but if we don't.
Right. But if, but if we, but if we're advertising that we're having the meetings twice a month, then people are going to delay with the applications, knowing that there's going to be a meeting in two weeks, or.
They still, no.
We don't have a backlog, Lee, with all due respect, we don't, I don't see a backlog of applications. I think on a rare instance, like Paul suggests, we could, we could fit something in two times a month, but to.
No. See, if we don't, you have to understand, it has to be advertised for 30 days. So that's the issue.
It still would be, I don't understand that, I don't understand your argument. Your argument is, has to be advertised for 30 days. It would still be advertised for 30 days.
Yeah.
It's just that they would have to wait for the next 30 days for the next meeting, that's all.
That's right. And we're eliminating that.
Well, you're suggesting that we eliminate it. That's what you're, you're suggesting.
Somebody could come in and advertise on the 15th of the month.
And they have to wait 45 days.
For that next meeting on the 15th.
That's right. They'd have to wait till the end of the next month to the, that meeting.
That's my, I'm questioning, I'm asking you, the board, what they want to do.
We'd have to vote? All right, let's vote on it, then.
And we had a request for tonight's meeting, that's why I scheduled tonight's meeting when I did, to do it early.
I get that. And I'm, and I'm all for fitting stuff in, but I don't think that we should have, I don't think we should go on record and, and vote on the fact that we are willing to have these two meetings a month. I think that's overkill. I really do.
I disagree. Andrew, what's your feeling?
I don't really have a strong feeling about it, but, I mean, I'm just hoping we can just keep things flexible, so that if there's not a lot of stuff, that we can, if there's not a lot of things going on, we can, you know, instead of having one meeting a month where it's half an hour long, and then another meeting is half an hour long, to schedule things so that we address them in one meeting that just takes one hour. But hopefully, I mean, if we just reserve the time for the meeting, and then it's a spot available, but that we can just be flexible and try our best to try to not have.
No, the thing is, she has to have it done properly, so she can properly advertise it.
But we don't have a backlog of new applications.
No.
So continued hearings, we can always put those on agendas.
That's different. The continued hearings, we can do the original.
So I guess I don't understand what you're anticipating coming in, that we have to meet every two weeks.
In my opinion, and I've worked in multiple towns, that the meeting once a month is considered acceptable to all builders, and they just understand that's the way. Going above and beyond, and I'm, I'm a builder, so I would normally go for this, but, you know, it's a luxury if a board's willing to meet more often than once a month. So my, my opinion would be, let's keep the once a month. If there is a buildup, we're willing to make an exception for somebody, especially if there's a time crunch. But at the end of the day, I, you know what? Anytime somebody's coming in front of us, this is not a last-minute thing, they've had a lot of time to do it, and if they need to get it done faster, let their engineers work faster, don't put it on us. Get into the meeting before if you really need it done fast. So I, I kind of think every 30 days is kind of reasonable. I don't think it's, it's being unfair. And, and a willingness to do more if there is a backlog.
Well, I disagree. Maybe we'll try one more thing, then. What if we take it so that if something comes in after, like, if something comes in on